I believe that serves the public good, not just for the neighborhood but for the township as a whole.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we open to the public?
I just want to say, I think with that being said, it reinforces the idea that should the use of a daycare center go away, there must be a requirement to come back to the board to accommodate another use.
Thank you.
I just have a number of things that need to be clarified because I think since we had the applicant go through quickly, there's another number of things I think you'd help the board for them to clarify.
All right, go ahead, Mark.
So as far as the buffer, I heard two different things. I heard from the engineer that he'll work with me, I don't know what that means, and the other, I heard from the planner that you'll totally comply. So the answer is which is it?
Well, to the extent that we, there may be areas where we can't comply because of the width, but we will buffer the entire perimeter of that property and we'll work with you to do that.
Okay, so you may need some, so the way that the buffering, again, this is not my, this is not my preference, this is what the ordinance requires.
Right.
The rear of the property is supposed to be a 20-foot area, clear of parking and building, and within that area, there's supposed to be fencing and evergreen trees to provide the buffer. So we just heard about the parking and building setback, again, within that's supposed to be a buffer. So it sounds like you are asking for the relief to the degree you can't accommodate it fully on-site.
We can't do 20 feet, but in the five feet or five feet plus, because it varies, we will put a fence along the entire rear of the property and we will put landscaping or evergreens between the fence and the building along the entire rear of the property.
So Schedule 6, that buffering requirement, you're not seeking a variance?
As far as the width of it, we are seeking a variance because we can't put 20 feet because we only have five feet, but the trees and the fencing we are going to put in.
Okay.
Mark, for my own edification, the public good requirement here, is that, because it seems like this problem was created by the building, that we're then solving with saying the public good was accommodating the building's requirements for all that extra parking. Is that what the public good?
In my opinion, I think you, I think you summarized the testimony very well. I think Mr. Brian can certainly, it's his testimony, can clarify, but I think what the gist of it is, is they're proposing a building of a certain size with certain parking spaces, some number of units, and the sum of this development is beneficial to the Hamilton Street area, and that those, the, by providing a development of this scale and this design, that that's the public good that's being satisfied, and that benefit is outweighing the detriment resulting from this variance. Is that a fair summary of your testimony? Mr. Lanford, can you just give them a thing?
He would like a response, yes. We need more than a thumbs up.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. I agree. Okay, so then as far as the buffer, again, so, because I do have a number of clarifications because we just want to make sure the record's clear.
I can tell.
So what we've heard is that the buffering, to the degree they may not be able to make, meet the width, but they're going to provide fencing and the buffer, and there's standards in there about the number of and size of evergreens that they're going to comply with.
Correct.
Architects, again, as far as clarification, Mr. Brown had asked about, you know, that, I think it was the Brown accent, and you'd said, we'll look into it. Do you have any other clarification? You know, if it's going to be in the resolution, what does that mean? And what staff going to be looking at to try to, if it's approved, what are we looking at to try to see if you're complying with the board's intent?
Good question. What I was thinking was to do a corner detail similar to the front of the building so that the back, I think, can you go back one?
Yeah.
Thanks. So the top drawing is the rear view, so when you asked that question, I was thinking that that far-left tower, if you want to call it that, and the far-right would include that same detail that's on the front corner.
Right.
So all four corners would have that wraparound detail.
I think a positive head nod from the gentleman who asked the question.
That meets my concern, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the downlights, what sides are those going to be on? The accents light, yeah, so the lights, is that?
They would be along the front and around the immediate corners on the sides.
Okay, the immediate corners, but not, so where the brown is but not going down the rest of the side?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Sinage, just to clarify, testimony was that you're going to comply, and I'm, this is just, again, this is what the ordinance says, not necessarily me, but the top, the one on the top where it says 752 Hamilton Street?
Right.
That's actually a variance because the ordinance says you can't basically put it up to a certain height. So you understand that that, if you say you're going to comply, that sign goes away entirely?
Yeah, I was made aware of that, so that will not be there.
Yeah, okay.
It will be lower.
Or if we feel it's an architectural benefit to keep it, we'll come back and ask for the variance.
All right, thank you. Refuse, we heard that refuse is going to be brought out to the street, that's going to be on Hamilton Street. Is there an area where this is going to go? How many, how's that going to work? I think on other sites, it's all to the side street. Now, this is, the only place for this to go is right on Hamilton Street, right by your entrance. How does that work?
Well, my intent when I did the layout was to provide a trash compactor that immediately turns on when trash is put down, the chute. The pods, you would have several pods inside the trash room that would be switched out, and then a truck of the size that can go into the building would access that area to remove and switch out the pods with empty ones. I heard testimony that it would be done on Hamilton Street, but that was not my intent.
I guess it goes to whoever gave that testimony. Okay. Somebody provided the testimony that that's where it's going?
That was me, and so when I testified, I said it was my understanding it would be brought to the street. I stand corrected. I did not design the building, and if there's a smaller truck that can go in to get the pods, then that, I think, is a better idea than having it street-side or curb-side.
Just be sure that it's not the kind of trucks that lift the pods up over the truck to dump it in.
That's correct.
That is trying to come into
Right.
the first floor.
Let's see if Mark is done with these questions first, then we'll come back. Let's let Mark.
The plan has a transformer along the Hamilton Street frontage. Is there any opportunity to put that in a less conspicuous location? Or if it has to stay on Hamilton Street, is there a way to screen it?
I believe that's the preferred location for the utility company, and I would assume, if you could correct me, we could put landscaping in front of that somewhat.
You're going to land, okay. You have room for, all right, you might want to look at some type of architectural treatment. I don't know how you're going to landscape that with the area provided, but you'll look to screen that in some way, right?
Yes. Yeah, the building steps back at that point. We stepped it back for that purpose.
Okay.
But we will look at that.
All right, two last questions. We had heard that the busing is going to be dropped off, they'll be dropped off in the street. How do they get to the building? We've heard that there's, the doors on Hamilton Street will be locked, and the way that I read the site plan, the only other way than to get into the back parking area from Hamilton Street is through the vehicular drive. Unless I'm reading those plans wrong. So if kids are dropped off by bus on Hamilton Street, how do they get into the space?
Typically, when we do have kids come into our after-school program, the kids are dropped off on Hamilton Street. We have people ready to take them and then bring them into the daycare from the side.
Okay. And then you, we heard that there's 20 employees, where are they going to park?
Most of our employees actually either live in the building or they come around from the houses around it. If they were to, if they were, if they did take their car, they would park in the grade area, the first, you know, the parking grade area.
Mark, you didn't answer your first question. There's no side entrance here, so where would the children be taken?
No, so they would, we would have someone ready to take them in at the front of the building, then, you know, walk them through that corridor, the lot, the side, the sidewalk.
So the door will be open?
No, they would walk through that sidewalk and through the back.
I got it, see it.
Which is what we already do for the bigger school buses on 510 Hamilton Street.
Is there an opening there? I'm reading it as a wall, that's why, that's a, that's a door, that's not a door.
So they would go probably through the apartment lobby?
Where all of the blue arrows are, those are doors. There's four small arrows.
So there will be an open door on Hamilton?
There will, and that, I did that so that John could have flexibility, and also if this was never, maybe not a daycare someday, that would be.
So that was not the answer that I got to my question, then?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that was not the question, because I was told specifically that there would be no access from Hamilton Street, and now I'm hearing that there will be access from Hamilton Street. So which one is it?
Well, when I designed the building, that was my reasoning, but as far as John's...
So it would be, it would be a case-by-case scenario, right? Like, we could either, we could, what we do at 510 Hamilton is we take them from the, we take them from the front of the street, take them around the back, walk them through, walk them through either the apartment lobby, or if the room permits, we can definitely let them in, we can definitely open the door.
So then my concern definitely still stands, that parents will opt if there's a stack to...
That's only for the bus.
That's only for the bus? That's not my understanding. That door, so you're telling me that door is closed for every other reason?
Yes.
Even for, like, even for the guests that are coming in, like an Uber or any Lyft, I mean, how are they getting into the building?
The front of the building is the main entrance for the residential units. That's open, that's open to the public.
And where is that?
That's the...
That's that big blue arrow, the same arrow we're talking about? Am I mistaken here?
That's strictly for the purpose.
So then, so then, look, I'm getting like five answers. I just need one answer. What is going to happen? Is that door open or is it not open?
That is for the apartments. The testimony that Mr. Park gave, and I, concerning the daycare, the commercial space, is that it is not his intent to make the commercial space available for occupants along Hamilton Street.
But that door will be open, and it will be possible for people to walk through it to get to the daycare.
If they arrive by bus, you haven't addressed the question, by bus. How do they get in by bus?
So if they do, like I said, it's an operational thing, and it's, we have to do it circumstantially, right? If it makes sense to do, open one door just for the purposes of getting students in from the bus, we can, and there is no classroom right directly behind that door, we could definitely make that accommodation. If it's, if the planning board's strong recommendation that we just have them go through the apartment lobby and then bring them through the back, we can also make that accommodation as well.
As I understand the testimony, the kids would go through the residence lobby, out into the parking area, assuming there isn't a car parked in that particular space in front of that door, and then turn right, and then go back into the building through the right-hand blue triangle. Is that right?
That's correct. That's one option that we can explore.
We don't want to know what you're going to explore, we want to know how it's going to operate tonight.
So currently in our existing daycare, we have 12 kids that arrive by bus. For the 12 kids that arrive by bus, we have them actually pull up in the back because the bus is small enough to come in to do the back, and we let them out through the back.
And you also have a back, you don't have a back here.
This, we would not have a back here, but we also have kids that we receive by daycare. We also have kids that come and the buses drop them off on Hamilton Street. These are the after-school kids.
But you take them to the back, you don't have a back here.
Yeah, we take them to the back.
We want you to speak to this building only.
Yeah.
How are you going to handle dropping off kids from the bus, kids who arrive by bus?
We would take them through the, through to the back.
No, that's, show us the path, use the cursor to show us the path.
They would go through here, go through the lobby, and then they would come out right through here.
So the kids would interact with a residential space of like, just private residents who live there, there would be an interaction potentially between the kids and the residents living there?
Yes, and that's currently what we have at 510 Hamilton, too.
Okay, but you will have employees to control the flow, manage everything?
Of course.
All right.
I have a question over here behind you.
Yes.
Why not have a separate entry, just for the children?
We can create a separate entry on the front if the infrastructure of the daycare...
For the school bus.
Yeah, just for the students that are coming on the school bus. We can have an entrance on the front. If it's the board's preference that we do not have an entrance on the front, we will, like, not even have that as an option.
Yeah, from safety perspective, I find it a little problematic to go through a common area and then open parking lot.
Understand.
You know, the preference would be to have a direct entry to the school.
What about in the event of an emergency? Do you have an alternate exit for the daycare? Maybe it isn't such a bad idea to have, you know, an entrance on Hamilton Street.
Yeah, that's a good question. Though the doors that are along Hamilton Street will also act as egress requirement Only open out if there was a need for egress.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions? Go ahead.
So I just need to say this, I hope you'll defer to your director of the daycare with what is safest and best for the kids, because the directors and the teachers who work with the students every day will probably come up with the most creative and safest solution. It is a little concerning that one of the solutions is walking through a public space where anybody could walk through, and then having small children working through a parking lot, even with supervision, that's not a great solution. So again, I'll just stress that as an educator myself, usually the teachers on the ground and the directors of the daycare come up with the creative and safest solutions. I'll hope you'll take their consideration. I still haven't gotten an answer on trash removal, because the answer I got was that trash was being picked up from the street. So could we get an official answer about what's happening with trash collection?
Sure. The official answer is that all the trash will be picked up within the parking lot area.
And typical trash removal trucks will be able to fit in that space comfortably.
Not typical trash removal trucks, a truck that is geared to go in that area of the building and is able to pick up the pods and deliver new pods.
So you're saying that there are special trash removal companies that can pick up these specialized pods?
That is correct.
That will fit in that space?
Yes.
Mark, did you have more? Or any more questions?
Yeah, I just had one more question, sorry. The testimony from the planner, just back to you, was that you had no alternative but to truncate the amount of parking were you to comply with our 20-foot requirement. There's a huge court, like a huge empty part of the building. What happens if you just move that part closer? Like, is the impact that you just lose apartments?
If I could answer some of that, you, we would lose an entire row of parking.
Yeah, what I'm saying is if you made the entire building shorter to comply, what would happen? What's, can you still get the circulation you need for the parking? Does anything, does everything else work in that circumstance? Is the only impact really that you lose apartments?
Well...
If you comply, if you were fully compliant?
You would lose an entire row of parking stalls, like one next to the other, the entire width of the lot would be lost, and you would, yeah, that's the main reason.
But if you reduce the number of apartments, then you reduce the number of parking spaces required. It's just that you've designed a building to fill the lot as fully as you possibly can.
Well, I hear what you're saying. I also designed the building so that the front, you know, we're talking about a four-foot setback, in some places it's eight or nine feet. We gave the building some dimension so it didn't look boxy, and that added to the need of a smaller rear yard.
Okay, I do want to give the public an opportunity here to be heard from. Is there a motion open up for public comment?
Seconded.
Allen Federer?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye, it is now officially open to the public.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Wasnesky of the law firm Wasnesky and Associates. I represent Levin Properties, who is the owner of the adjacent property, Block 154, Lot 9, I guess as you're going south on Hamilton.
Supermarket or?
Yeah, it's where the supermarket is, and there's a couple other retail uses there. And so, I want to say at the outset, that my client's not opposed to the application here tonight, but does have several concerns that we'd like to put on the record for the board's consideration. As a matter of fact, the addition of 120, or whatever the number of residential units will be, would be welcome from my client's perspective, running a retail center immediately next to the apartment building, and in fact, it's something that Levin is working on elsewhere. But we do have, I had to get that in.
That was really well done.
But we do have concerns about the, let's call it the density of the application, because we understand that the zoning for this zone allows for zero outline. That's a decision municipality has made, and that's fine. But when you have the building not comply with the rear lot setback, and you have the overall building coverage being about 30% above where it's supposed to be, the building occupies, as I think one member had pointed out, the entire available land. And what that does for my client is, their retail center, as you drive south on Hamilton, you can see it at the property line at the beginning of this project. Once this is built, you will not see that retail center until you come to the very end of the building, and so we lose visibility. And that's certainly a major concern, and that's really a function of the building coverage and the rear setback. The other concern that we have is the parking. I understand the shared parking analysis, but if you just for a moment entertain the fact that you've got with the number of two bedrooms and one bedrooms and studios, if you just take that and you assume in a two-bedroom apartments, there might be two cars, right? And then you assume that each of those apartments, half of them might have a visitor. That takes you to 196 parking spaces. And the concern that my client has is that we've got a really convenient place for people who can't find a parking spot in this building. It's our surface lot, right next door. And so our concern is simply, by not meeting the required parking, we are now going to be the recipient of the cars that can't find parking in this building. And then finally, one concern is, as I noted, I think it's on page 5 of 7 of the application, there's a depiction on the back where there are leaders that drain to the surface. Now, the current contours of the property between this property and Levin property, this property is a couple of feet higher, and so the concern that we have is that if that water is draining to the surface, and our property's lower, maybe in the summer it doesn't matter that much, but on a cold day in the winter, we could have icing on our property and therefore put either our employees or customers at risk. Spoken to the engineer, he says that the design will prevent that, and I hope so, but I just wanted to put that on the record, but that's a concern that we would have. So ultimately, it's the setback blocking the view, and I would submit that that's part of the density of the project, the parking and the drainage. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Please start lining up so we can get through it quickly.
Raise your right. Everyone, as you come up, if I could just swear again quickly, do you swear that any testimony you're going to provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Timothy Kelly, K E L L Y, 136 Grauser Road, Somerset, New Jersey. I've been a Tonton resident for 60 years. I have worked on Hamilton Street, owned business on Hamilton Street since 1988. I am very familiar with everything on Hamilton Street, and I also am on the Hamilton Business District Board. A lot of people, when you drive down Hamilton Street, it looks different, okay, and it looks better. But there are still problems on Hamilton Street. Majority of crime in Franklin Township happens on Hamilton Street. People get killed on Hamilton Street. Businesses get robbed on Hamilton Street. We have businesses that are suffering on Hamilton Street, and one of the main reasons why we created this board was to somehow get people on Hamilton Street, because people will help the businesses. They should get rid of the crime, because the more people that are on Hamilton Street and out and about, it's, it's the one way that we got to get Hamilton Street better. Now, if anybody's been down Hamilton Street since COVID, you can see there are a lot of abandoned buildings, okay? There are a lot of stores that are hurting, okay, because COVID has affected everything. Now, I don't know if this counts as public good, but if somebody wants to take the chance and spend $40 million on building something on Hamilton Street, that, you know, we do have four major buildings on there, and we can see they have improved Hamilton Street, okay? I am on Hamilton Street every day, I also own a business on Hamilton Street, and a lot of these businesses, you know, we can go down, up and down Hamilton Street. When there's not a school bus, you're flying up and down Hamilton Street. You shouldn't be, because it should only be 25 miles an hour. But we don't have a parking problem, and to take a line from Vince, when we have a parking problem is when we finally did something right, okay? But right now, we don't. The apartment's already built. I drive by at night. I used to own a bar in New Brunswick. I would come home at 2:00 AM, 3:00 AM. I would drive up and down Hamilton Street, and the buildings that are there now, the parking lots are never full, not at nighttime. You know, people don't have as many cars. COVID did that, too. A lot of people got rid of their second car because they're working from home. So I look at this as a win for Hamilton Street and everybody on Hamilton Street, and it's also, we have to look at, you've approved, I want to say like four buildings already on Hamilton Street that nobody's doing anything with. You know, it's like, you got to, you know, building costs are higher than ever, interest rates are higher than ever. Mr. Park, they already built something, okay, which looks good, and that was actually, I believe, the first major building on Hamilton Street. He also did buy the Rite Aid, which I honestly believe if he didn't buy the Rite Aid, that would be sitting there empty, because what would you need, I think it's a 9,000-square-foot building, what would you really need it for? You know? So I think this is a good thing for Hamilton Street, and then I'm going to address the five-story, okay? He is doing two stories of parking, so really it's technically a four-story. But part of the five-story thing is, we are on our board, okay, unanimously agreed back in 2019 that we wanted to go five stories because we were getting less interest in the street. And you have to remember, we're competing with Bound Brook, which is doing six-story buildings, Somerville, which is doing five- and six-story buildings. This is who we have to, because, you know, we need to bring them in here, and that's really one of the reasons why we all on the board, you know, decided on the five stories. And I think somebody asked about how many people on the board are Franklin residents. There's nine on the board. I can almost positively say seven are Franklin. One of the other members is here. I believe he lives in Franklin, too, so he might be eight, and one, I'm not sure where they live at. But we're all Franklin residents, and a lot of us have been on the board 10 years, donating our time, just like you guys do. I think Mr. Vigno is the only one that gets paid on tear, so the rest of us are here for free. So thank you. Bye.
Thank you, thank you. And I don't know how much credit you want to give Vince, he just turned the heat on in here, so.
Sir, if you could raise your right, if you could raise your right hand.
199 Pier Street.
Do you swear any testimony you provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I got Bill Grippo, 199 Pier Street. I think, Vince, did you turn the heat on for some reason? Because, I mean, just for me, because they're ready to fall asleep back there. I'm going to give you a quick...
Real quick, real quick.
Real quick. First of all, when Ms. Felicia spoke before about the soccer thing, take that seriously. Back in the '60s, the reason why 287 came through, and the reason why we have World's Fair Drive and the travel lodge from years ago, is because the World's Fair was in flushing. So they prepared for it. So you are too far off. Another piece of history. When I came to Franklin in '77 to work for the school boards, but like 47 years now, there was a lady in town, does anyone here remember that name? Oh, boy, I'm really dating myself. Nancy Henry. really dating myself. Nancy Henry was the first black female mayor of Franklin Township. And I was the first adult ed director. And she said, Bill, let me take you for a ride around town. And she did. And then she came to Hamilton Street, which she lives right on that, there was on top was her apartment, still there, that little store, little boutique. It's a food store. Anyway, she said, this town has no town center, Bill. We have no town center. We can't even do a parade, Bob LaCourte. We can't do a parade, nothing. There's just empty buildings. Now, of course, in the last few years, you see some beautiful stuff. I actually swing the golf club in part of play, trying to beat this guy over here. But, you know, there's, there are some nice buildings there. This is a win-win. This is a no-brainer. Put a picture of that thing up real quick, can you? Just of the build. Look at that. That's what needs to be there. Now, you all have some very legitimate concerns, Sammy Shabon. You do have concerns. And I think some of that stuff has to be reflected in your resolution. But you got to vote this in. This is good for Franklin. I mean, you're not getting anybody more Franklin than me. Nobody. Hamilton Street is the entrance from New Brunswick. This building will put live bodies in the hospitals that work there, in the doctor's office, in Rutgers University. It's a great housing project for Hamilton Street. Final thing, today's Juneteenth, right? Well, Saturday, it's so hot in here, it's, you guys got to fix it. Saturday, I marched in the parade. I was the only Board of Education member, Sammy, that was marching in the parade, okay? And down the street, there were people coming out to try to build community. But one person was here, 50 feet, there's another person. You can't have a parade like that. Bob LaCourte does a great job on a Memorial Day parade. DeMar Lane's not the place to have it. He knows that. Hamilton Street is. When it's built up, it's going to be a great place for a parade. Do what you got to do, whatever little things you got to get fixed up with the garbage, with this and that. Vote it in with some resolutions, and let's get the job done. Thank you.
Good evening, sir. If you could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear any testimony you provide is truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
My name is John Okoye. The last name is O K O Y E. I've been a resident of Franklin for the last 34 years. I own a property on Hamilton Street. I have my business on Hamilton Street as well. I'm a member of the board as well. We, as a matter of fact, have gone through most of the projects that we have on Hamilton Street. And we applaud people that build something like this. I was on the street when there was nothing there. I own my property. My property was one of the abandoned properties in Hamilton, on Hamilton. At the time we bought it, there was nothing happening. And we are glad that the street is being beautified. I've sat in so many meetings where the studies were made on parking. I remember asking questions in one of the settings, where the analysis was that the, most of the studios and the one-bedroom are youngsters that are currently using Uber and walking and sharing commutes. So that creates less of an impact on parking. That's one of the studies that was done. And I was, I've been on several studies that was done in the street. This project, as it looks, a win-win situation, just like the other guy said. There are kinks that you guys have to walk out. That's where you belong. But at the end of the day, we want to see something like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, quickly, please line up. Please line up. If you're going to speak, please line up. We got to get through.
If you could raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear any testimony you provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Nick DiMeglio, D I M E G L I O, 18 Napody Place, Somerset. And I'm here on behalf of the Franklin Township Chamber of Commerce. And I'm also a member, liaison for the Hamilton Advisory Committee. And yes, I live in Franklin. So for us, obviously, we want to generate, promote, and advocate for our businesses. So this is definitely a win-win for Hamilton Street, for our local businesses. And as Mr. Grippo said, sure, there's things that need to be worked out with it, trash parking. But we definitely support this. We discussed it in our last meeting. And this is something that we believe that would definitely benefit Hamilton Street in the development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, final call. Anyone else coming forward? Anyone else coming forward? Can entertain a motion to close the public? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Sitting down? Motion carries. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to try to be brief. I first of all, want to address Mr. Wyszynski's comments. With respect to his concern about the surface ponding or flooding or icing, council called me. We spoke last week. I alerted my engineer. My engineer reviewed the site plan, and I think spoke to Mr. Wyszynski. And we can unequivocally go on the record and indicate that we are handling all our drainage on site, and that his concern will not occur, because the way our stormwater management is handled, he will not have that situation. Now, his other issue about his building not being able to be seen. Your ordinance requires us to be where we are at. As a matter of fact, we are set back, as indicated by our architect and our engineer, about four feet from the property line. Your ordinance requires us to be right on the property line. And so we can't do anything about that. And in his argument, well, if we made the building smaller, then that would go away. It won't go away. The building has to be where it is. So, you know, that really is not, I think, something, and if we could have worked it out and done something for him, we would have. But we can't, because your ordinance requires it. Regarding the parking, first of all, again, I think you've heard ample testimony that we have enough parking on site to accommodate our facility. If we don't, and somebody parks on his site, now the car towed. You know, he has a right to protect his property. And if somebody trespasses upon his property, you know, that car can be taken away. But based on the testimony of Ms. Dolan and Mr. Zulo, it is clear that our site will adequately handle the day-to-day operations for both the childcare and also for the residents. I don't want to take a lot of time going over all of the testimony concerning the variances. I think the variances have been supported. With respect to Mr. Chase's comment concerning the height, we, the zone requirement is 50 feet. We're at 5211. If it is that important for this board, for us to cut the building or each apartment down by six inches, we'd be happy to do it, which would bring us at 5011. However, we do not think, as testified to by Mr. Ludwig, it's a great idea. But if it's that important that that 50-foot height be there, again, we can get it down to 5011 and just have eight-foot ceilings in each of the apartments. But I think having the higher ceiling, higher volume, is an amenity and a benefit to the residents of those apartments. Other than that, I don't want to take the rest of the board's time. I thank you for your consideration. And I would hope that you would grant the site plan approval with the variances and reasonable conditions, as may be enumerated by Mr. Vignolo.
So most from the board?
I move to approve the project. You have a list of conditions and recommendations.
We have the items that were placed on the record. The one item that I think that was kind of up in the air was how to address the parking issue. There was a question over whether or not it was a deed restriction requiring a payment upon the change of the first-floor use or deed restriction, which would require them to return to the board for amended site plan approval. So it's.
Well, I'm making the motion. My preference is to require them to return to the board in the event the use changes.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? Let's do a roll call.
Yeah.
Theodore Chase?
I'll vote for this. One thing with the audience approval, Mr. Wyszynski would dearly like to have, I'm sure. And it is very much in line with the way we've been trying to develop Hamilton Street. I'm just concerned that in the process, we're sort of pushing all of the limits in the zoning ordinance without really good justifications. Mr. O'Brien's justifications are mostly sort of boilerplate. But I don't think it will cause any great harm, particularly if we have five stories rather than four. And as has been testified, more people walking on the streets, assuming they have homes, the better. It's just a sense that we're letting our zoning ordinance being pushed out all around the edges and up. But that, I guess, is sort of a theoretical concern.
So for the record, that was a yes?
That was a yes. A somewhat reluctant yes.
All right.
Robert LaCourte?
Yes.
Sammy Shabon?
Yes, similar concerns to Dr. Chase. I think it's an amazing project, and I'm very grateful that these types of projects are coming to Franklin. I just fear that we are continuously pushing the limits of what's acceptable. And so it is a closer call for me, because it is an amazing project, and there's so much to be had from it, that that is the public good that's accomplished by the restriction, the need for the 20, although I get the sense that some more could have been done there. But I will, I will move for this to be approved, with the conditions that I agree with Bob and the motion, that if that daycare were to change, that we would like to see you guys here to discuss that further. So thank you.
Jennifer Ragno?
I also appreciate that if the daycare center changes to something else, that the applicant would come back to review and touch base and see how things are going. So yes.
Mahir Rafi?
Yes, with the same condition with the daycare.
Charles Brown?
This is a difficult one for me. I do get my hair cut on Hamilton, believe it or not. You know, I, too, was someone who arrived to New Jersey about 14 years ago, wondered where was the downtown for this beautiful township. And Hamilton is a place that I visit frequently. I think it needs a gateway, considering the polls. I vote yes. But I am concerned with the vehicular drop-off for children, the potential stacking on Hamilton, and the overall pedestrian safety as a result of that concern with stacking. But I see this as a huge improvement for the corridor and for the township. So yes.
Robert Thomas?
I'm going to vote yes. I remember, you know, talking about history lessons, these projects started back around 2000, and it was called Renaissance 2000, not the Hamilton Business District. There's an old saying that you should be careful what you wish for, because you might get, your wishes come true. This is what we were wishing for, along with the other buildings. This is what was intended for this area. Maybe, I understand that, and then, you know, sympathetic with some of the issues involving the daycare, the walking of the kids and things like that. But I think these are some of the issues that come with this type of development, which was something that we have highly desired here for now 25-plus years. And we're finally getting it with the investments that people are making. It's benefits, in my opinion, far outweigh the detriments. I just want to make one mention, the project next door. You make a good point that it might not be visible if you're driving in one direction in a car. But this whole area was being redesigned for people to live there and walk there and use the facilities there. So if people are walking and using all the other stores and facilities, they will find your clients' project. Anyway, I spoke longer than I need to. Yes, and good luck with it.
Rebecca Hubert?
I think, over the past few years especially, we've heard a lot about the need in the state for more housing, for more daycares and childcare. So I think this is a really good project. I do agree with some of the conditions and concerns that the four members have already shared. But overall, I'm excited to see this come to Hamilton. As someone who's a little bit newer to Franklin, I think it's going to give it a lot of character that a lot of the surrounding towns have, and really improve life for the residents. So I'm going to vote yes.
Mark Dancy?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, before the votes announced, just one clarification. Unfortunately, since Ms. Rafi got here after the application had started, you wouldn't be eligible to vote on the application. So if you could just make that notation, I would appreciate.
I'll do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So it carries, right? All right, passes. I do want to say, the architect, you did Thank you. You all be well. Take care. All right.
All right, Josh.
All right, so we appreciate your celebration. Take your celebration outside. Please take your celebrations outside. We still have a meeting. Please take your celebrations Please take your celebrations outside.
I don't have a response.
All right, everyone, please move out. We still have it. Have a meeting in order. Please move out.
We have one thing to be done that involves.
Please move out.
Good luck with it.
Please move out. We're still, we're still having a meeting. Everyone, please move out. We're going to do the traditional countdown. Five, four, three, two, one. Excuse me, sir.
But it's just the bus.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. You could do that after the meeting. Thank you. Take care. All right, Mark, we, Christine, we had a discussion around the subdivision committee. I think we now have the representative here. I know.
Yeah, we do have enough people. Mahir and Bob.
Again, I think because of the hour, I'll just coordinate with Mahir and Bob and Mike and see if we can convene, unless they want to stay after. But.
They don't want to stay out there. All right. Just wanted to go back to that.
I think, again, we'll do it between now and the next meeting, and then we'll have a resolution for that next meeting.
All right. There are no more committee reports. Any new business? No new business? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Everyone, enjoy your night. Happy Juneteenth.